Everyone. Good evening, everyone. Before we get our meeting started today, I would like it is to be noted that this meeting was requested by four board members. However, and those board members were Mickens Murray, Joshua Thomas, Adam Stafford, David Murray. However, our policy indicates that five had to make that request. In the interest of the being collegial and to the nature of the issues to be discussed, the chair has called this meeting. With that, we will proceed with the with that understanding. Now, good evening and welcome to the September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two special virtual board meeting. I would like to ask everyone to turn off any wireless communication devices to avoid any technical interference in the meeting. And one thing I forgot to add is the purpose with the reason we're doing this board meeting at virtual because the we had all the board members in attendance prior to this meeting today at in a virtual hearing. And rather than have to leave the hearing and come up to Upper Marlboro, we thought it would be in the best interest of staff and the board members to proceed with virtual.
I apologize, Madam Chair. Board Member Boozer Struther has her hand raised.
I see it, but I I haven't finished my presentation. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
I don't think the meeting has been started for the public.
No. Yes, it has.
No, it hasn't.
It is recording.
It's recording, but it isn't live to the public.
It's in a practice session.
Yeah, mine still says this. We're in practice session.
Yeah, we the public doesn't see us as far as I understand.
This board member Boozer Struther.
I just started it. Continue.
Madam Chair, would you begin from the beginning now that the public has access to the meeting? Prior to now, they did not have access to the meeting.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Before I call the meeting to order, it is to be noted that this meeting was requested by four four board members, Judy Mickens Murray, Joshua Thomas, Sheila Adam Stafford, and David Murray. However, our policy indicates that there need to be five requesting a special meeting. In the interest of being collegial and the nature of the issues to be discussed, the chair has called this meeting. With that being said, good evening and welcome to the September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two special virtual board meeting. I must also note that this time all board meetings are to be held in person. However, because of the the board members being in attendance virtually for a oral hearing, we agree that we would continue on virtual rather than in the virtual and have to be in person at the Board of Ed. So with that, that is the reason for the virtual board meeting today. I would like to ask everyone to turn off any wireless communication devices to avoid any technical interference in the meeting. Also, we will have Spanish interpretation services available for this evening. Ms. Wethara, would you please make an announcement that Spanish interpretation is available by clicking on the globe icon at the bottom of the screen?
La interpretación simultánea en español está disponible clickeando el globo en la parte de abajo de su pantalla.
Gracias and thank you. For those who are not able to observe now, this meeting is being recorded and information will be on our board webpage and available on the PG CPS YouTube page. Ms. Barton, please call the row.
Good evening, everyone. This is Adam Stafford.
Here.
Mrs. Boozer Struther.
Here.
Mr. Serrano Ruiz.
Here.
Dr. Harris.
Here.
Mrs. LaSalle Frasier.
Here.
Mrs. Mickens Murray.
Here.
Dr. Z Miller. Mr. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Valentine.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Present.
Dr. Miller.
Here.
We have Quorum.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Now we will move into the adoption of this agenda for September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. May I get a motion to adopt the agenda for the September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two special board meeting? They'll move.
They'll move. Second.
It has been moved in second to adopt the meeting agenda for September fifteenth special board meeting. Any objections? Hearing none, the agenda is adopted. There are two items to discuss this evening. The Adelphi School Naming and the Maryland Office of Inspector General the Office of Inspector General for Education Report. We will first move to item two point one, which is the Adelphi School Naming. And this request was made by Board Member Madeline LaSalle Frasier. So we will open with you. Let me give the rules. We will take up Adelphi School Naming first. There will be two rounds of members offering comments. The first round, each member may speak for five minutes. The second round, each member may speak three minutes. Board staff will time each speaker. They will sound a buzzer when the time has expired. And the first speaker is Board Member Madeline LaSalle Frasier.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. Feliz Dia de la Hispanidad. Today is the beginning of Hispanic Heritage Month, and I wanted to make sure that we highlight that. I want to begin by sharing a quote by Marian Wright Edelman that I personally live by and as an educator, I think that is very important to share. And that is that you can't be what you can't see. I have requested this agenda item to be included in this special meeting as an opportunity to revisit the naming of Adelphi Middle School. I consider this an opportunity like no other where we as a school board get to reflect and discuss the naming of a school. We have a chance to name one of our middle schools in a manner that is reflective of diverse population in our community. The importance of role models in everyday life cannot be underestimated. Children look for role models that they can look up to and learn from. Most people can think back when you were younger and remember that who that role model was. Sometimes these role models can even help shape a young child's future career or passion. But oftentimes, for young children of Latinx descent, it can be very horrifying and a positive role model that they can look up to. That is why Latinx representation is vital for the success of Latinx children. We need to look at the name of a school that is emblematic of the community. Showcasing role models sends an empowering message to our students in the community. It tells them that they matter and that we see them. This is particularly important for PG CPS Latino students because they make up thirty-six percent of our student population, and we're continuing to grow. As the only PG CPS Latina board member, I am personally invested in creating equitable representation in our schools for our Latinx community. And to that end, I have worked closely with my colleague, Board Member Pamela Boozer Strother, who represents District Three, and to come up with a recommendation to this board that has the best interests of the community represent. I would like to ask Ms. Boozer Strutter to share our recommendation. And I want to turn over to her now for her to share a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you. And with the with the chair's permission, I would like to proceed.
The chair recognizes Board Member Pamela Boozer Strutter.
Thank you so much. Colleagues, this evening, Board Member LaSalle Frasier and I would like to propose to the board that we reconsider our vote on April twenty-eighth of the name of the new Adelphi Middle School located in District Three. We know this is highly unusual, but we believe we have an opportunity to both honor the community process and demonstrate that PG CPS is truly headed into a new day for school names that truly reflects the diversity of our school system. I would like to give context to the strength of the Adelphi name. For the past five years, this new middle school project has been referred to as the new Adelphi Area Middle School or simply the new Adelphi Middle School. Additionally, the final site's location was determined to be on the land that was occupied at the time by Adelphi Elementary, a community school that has been the second home to generations of residents of the area. In recent years, it is home to predominantly Latin American immigrant community with an outstanding English language learner program and a highly committed principal and staff. On the day the demolition began, the community experienced the bittersweet moment of saying goodbye to this building that had touched so many lives while the school community would move into a swing space. Six months later, when the naming committee of community leaders and PG CPS staff began their work, the opportunity to honor a Latino or Latina inspirational role model was a critical part of the conversations. While I did not serve on this committee, I was invited to attend one meeting to observe the process and hear recommendations of the many outstanding living and deceased individuals. Ultimately, the community was presented with five options of school names, three of them Latina leaders and the two other being Adelphi and Adelphi Mill. While the geographic name dominated the community survey vote, the option of Sonia Sotomayor Middle School did receive the first place vote for the individuals and had the impact of creating community excitement for recognizing such an important living Latina who is the Associate Justice of the Supreme Court of the United States, the first woman of color, first Hispanic and first Latina to hold the position. As our community emerged from stressful twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year and had time for summer rest and reflection, I began to hear from community members that they wanted to know if it was possible in some way to add the justice's name to the building. The more community members I spoke to, I was hearing a consistent expression of comfort with revisiting the name as long as the Adelphi name was not removed to honor the survey votes. The idea of merging the names has been met with positive feedback. Our colleague Madeline LaSalle Frasier also confirmed with me that the board has this rare opportunity to recognize the achievements of Latinos and confront a history of invisibility and generate a curriculum for our students to educate them on Justice Sotomayor's career history. Tonight, we join together and asking the board to make a motion that would override our previous vote of Adelphi Middle School for a new name, Sonia Sotomayor Middle School at Adelphi. And Chair Miller, this concludes my remarks, and I respectfully ask for you to consider calling upon Board Member LaSalle Frasier to discuss making this motion. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, you're on mute.
Thank you, Board Member Boozer Strutter. Board Member LaSalle Frasier.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I make a motion that we consider naming Adelphi Middle School as the Sonia Sotomayor Middle School at Adelphi.
Is there a second?
Second.
Who made the second? I didn't see.
Alba.
Oh, thank you. It has been moved in second that the board reconsider its vote to name the Adelphi Middle School Sonia Sotomayor at Adelphi. Am I correct?
Yes, that would be Sonia Sotomayor Middle School.
Okay. Any discussion? Board Member Mickens Murray. You're unmute.
I know. Thank you, Madam Chair. We have a policy and and I respect my colleagues and the and the what they're trying to do. I really appreciate that. But we have a policy, thirty-five hundred, which is in effect, and it says, renaming of schools must follow the board policy guidelines. It doesn't say in this policy anywhere where we can reconsider. And it all it says here, the Board of Education shall have discretionary authority to rescind a naming of any at any time based on an action by a private individual or organization that is deemed by the Board of Education to be inappropriate or in conflict with the values of the Board of Education and PG CPS. So I guess my ask here is maybe of the attorneys. Are we within are we operating within these this policy to do to carry out this motion? And the policy is thirty-five hundred.
Yeah, I'm actually looking at the policy and.
Page two.
Yeah. Or show discretion or the authorities of rescind the naming at any time based on the action of a private individual or organization. The current name is not the name of an individual or organization. So I don't believe based on this policy that the board has the discretion to rename, to rescind its vote and rename the school. And so, you know, it's a very limited authority for the board. And it talks about organizations and it talks about individuals. And it's my understanding that the current name would just be the area where the school is located. And I don't believe that that would fit into either of those boxes.
Thank you. So, Madam Chair, appreciating that we want our students to see folks that look like us and like Latinos, maybe we need to look at going forward how to put forth names that help us to do that. But being Chair of the Policy and Governance Committee, I can't support violating the policy that's in existence. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Williams.
Thank you. I'd just like to take a moment and celebrate the collaboration between the board members on this on this motion to merge the name. I think it's a great opportunity for us to do and reach a goal that is to show students, give students examples of what they can be. So I just wanted to celebrate the two board members in this work work to come together and to come up with a solution that satisfies not only the majority of the votes that were received to name the school using the policy, but also at the request of the community that saw that there was a need to to see themselves in a prominent location in their community. I just wanted to celebrate them.
Thank you. Board Member Adam Stafford. Board Member Mickens Murray, would you take your hand down, please?
So to legal counsel, can you, this isn't my question, but can you repeat what you just said regarding the policy surrounding this?
Reading the policy, the policy speaks to renaming schools that are named after individuals or organizations. Let's say you were to name it after a famous sports figure from the area. And subsequent to you name naming the school that he did something that brought shame to him and and as such, it brings shame to the name of the school. The school could be renamed because that person did something after the school was named after him that the school system felt was inappropriate. And it also talked to organizations. The current name is not an individual or an organization. It's named after the area. So I don't believe that the renaming would fit in that policy, which allows the school to be renamed.
I think that's the reason why it can be renamed. Because it's not, I don't understand why it's it's the reason why it's it's named after an area. It's not named after a person. So we're trying to name it. We're not trying to rename anything. We want to name the school.
It's my understanding the board has already named the school.
But it's been named after an area. You're saying that this policy applies if you want to rename it after a person. Am I understanding this correctly, colleagues?
The policy speaks to the ability to rename a school if the person or the organization did something to bring discredit or to that person or organization. Those are the those are the way I read it. Those are the only opportunities you have to rename a school. If it's named after a geographical location, I see nothing in the policy that says you can rename a school after a geographic location because of A, B, or C. You can leave. You can read the policy as being limiting.
Or you could read it in the opposite way that it doesn't limit us from doing that. It is the policy actually, in my understanding of what you're saying, is basically saying that there there is not a restriction on us naming a school that is currently named after a location and that we do have, we do actually have the ability to name it. It's not limiting us to name a school after a person. We're talking about if someone did something to bring shame or to bring harm, then that is when you would go through the Policy and Governance Committee. What we're saying is the school has been named after an area, and the policy does not say that we cannot then name it after a person. And so I think that we need to go forward with this vote. And I also want to say, you know, the to the school system, you know, typically in school systems, when you're naming a school, there is a lot of robust research that goes into the naming of a school. From my understanding, there was a survey that went out to the community. And then from that survey, basically, we took the results of that survey and named the school, an online survey. Were there any focus groups that were held to discuss the naming of the school? Can someone from the school?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
It's Michael Dickerson.
Yes.
Good afternoon, Board Members. We have some folks on the line who helped to facilitate the process for the naming of the school, but I certainly want to be sure, Ms. Adam Stafford, that you understand that there was a robust process. The committee and the community were very involved in this process. The school system facilitated, as is required by policy, but Mr. Jason Washington is on the line and when there were some back when there was some back and forth among committee members, we even brought in additional staff. So there was robust conversation about this more than one meeting. The board certainly has the right and is required to name the school, but I certainly don't want to suggest that the school system did not do a robust process and follow exactly what your policies require us to do. Mr. Washington, anything you want to add to that?
The chair recognizes Mr. Washington.
Nothing else to add other than to to the board members' question. There were no specific focus groups. It was handled through the committee. There were, I believe, five meetings. And the research and the information that was brought forth were brought forth by the committee members. They did research and brought a wide variety of names from the El Salvadorian community, the Nicaraguan community, Justice Sotomayor. So so that's where that information came from. All information was generated through the committee and through the committee members and their suggestions.
And how many of the committee members were Latino?
I don't have that number, but I would have to believe it was, if if not the majority, it was right at. I want to say the committee at best was fifty fifty, and so it was not a a insignificant number. I I can pull up the list of of.
I just I just don't feel that we have been clear on the actual process that was undertaken to give the school the name. And I actually would like to call on my colleague Mickens Murray to revisit the naming policy to look at what other school systems do that require focus groups, you know, telephone town halls that require a lot, an extensive amount of research and public discussion before a school can be named, because as my colleague LaSalle Frasier mentioned, you know, this is we still have schools named after slave masters. I mean, we this is something that actually should be part of the public discourse and dialogue and not just a small group of people. And so I just want to, that's that's my time, I believe, now.
Yes. Board Member David Murray.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to to thank my colleague Madeline Salfraser for bringing this this forth. Estoy de acuerdo. I will be supporting this. I think this is clearly something that is within the school board's power and rights. Thank you, Mr. Dickerson, for acknowledging that. We're a school board. Clearly, the naming of schools is something that we would be expected to do. I don't even know if getting into the minutia of renaming schools is necessary. The school hasn't even opened yet. This is the exact time that we would should be debating and publicly discussing the naming of the school. We talked a bit about, I think I heard perhaps the committee was fifty percent Latino. I'm quite certain the population of that school will be well over fifty percent Latino. So colleagues, it is the perfect moment to do the right thing. We don't need to overly complicate this and try to find ways and excuses out of this. Frankly, this discussion for me really brings up a lot of what systemic racism is about in our laws and our policies. Things are written and that are unwritten that oppress people. And so I would just ask my colleagues to do the right thing tonight. I will be supporting this motion, and I'm really thankful the colleagues brought it up. Thank you.
Board Member Boozer Strutter, Chair recognizes you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. You know, from my vantage point, I agree with Mr. Murray about that the school hasn't opened. And that is where my comfort level comes from, that we haven't actually implemented the initial vote. And I certainly would be fine to hear from a parliamentarian around a process to rescind that or if this just overrides it as a new new vote. But I did want to, you know, note that the Policy and Governance Committee did begin the revisions to the policy on naming at our two meetings ago. And the September twenty-second meeting agenda will have the first round of those revisions for the board to consider for public comment or to send back to committee for more work. And and what's so critical critical about this time period is that the Responsible Legacy Task Force of the County Council did complete its work. As many know, it it the work took a couple, I think, almost two years. I mean, part of that was pandemic. Part of it is that we are in a moment in time that we all recognize, you know, with the with invisibility, but also the removal of names. And I definitely look forward to all of the board members reviewing those recommendations in the Responsible Legacy Task Force, and I hope that we could have the Chair of that task force, Joseph Solomon, from the city of Hyattsville, address at least the Policy and Governance Committee about some of that thinking to inform ours and exactly how we go deeper with the community process. But tonight, I I would say I I would like to refrain from there being any criticism of the the work of the dedicated volunteers with the committee. It was a very difficult process. And I think it'd be best for us to just really look forward. Thank you.
I have a question before we move forward on this. Now, I my understanding is the motion was to rename or to merge, because what I understood, Board Member LaSalle to say, to include the name Sotomayor at Adelphi or Adelphi. Yeah. So are we really changing or are we adding? I mean, then we could, can we do that based on our policy? It will still be Adelphi or Sotomayor at Adelphi. Mr. Whitley, please bring some clarification to that.
Well, the argument, the argument can definitely be made that you're adding to the name that I think an argument can be made that you're merging the name or that you're adding to the name that it possibly could fit within the policy. But I read the policy. Board Member Mickens Murray read the policy.
Uh, but I read the policy, um, board member Mickens Murray read the policy. So, uh, if the board decides that you're, you're acting within the policy, uh, by adding to the name, that that would be the decision of the board.
Thank you. Um, board member Mickens Murray.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, one, one issue that I would like to ensure that we look at as a board is the committee that named the school followed the process that was outlined in the policy as it existed. Yes, we are in the process of changing the policy, which means we can expand it to include just what you want to do tonight. But if you do what you want to do tonight and not realize or accept that that policy has not been changed, then we are in essence not following the policy. One of the things that we continue to be called out on is that we don't follow the policy. So all I wanted to do was put it on the table, make sure that you understand that and make sure it's a deliberate decision that you're making. We can always going forward, put in place those things that we need to do to ensure that if you want to merge a school name, you can. If you want to change a school name, you can. But today, that policy does not exist. So I don't think that that's the punitive, uh, decision. And also the, the parents and the community members that set in on that, uh, naming of the school, I believe you're disenfranchising them. Why? Because the school system says if you follow certain rules, you can have this outcome. Then now the school system is saying, oh, we don't like your outcome, so we are going to change it. It might have been better if you had gone back to that committee and at least had their input, but I don't know. It doesn't exist in the policy for that to happen. But, you know, it's the pleasure of the board and the board can vote to decide to, to not adhere to this policy and to make a decision tonight to change the name.
Thank you. Um, board, Vice Chair Williams. Vice Chair Williams.
Sorry about that. I had to try to get off.
Vice Chair Williams, you're, you're chopping. We can't understand you.
Board colleague on Friday, um,
You're, you're still chopping.
I'm sorry. Hold on.
Consider, may I offer, um, a suggestion? Uh, considering the, uh, concerns that, um, board member Mickens Murray has brought to this board and to, uh, what our attorney has, uh, stated to us. Rather than move forward at this time, move, let's, uh, table this. Uh, since the school has not opened, this would allow time for this to go back to that committee as well as the commit of the Governance Policy and Governance Committee revisit that policy. And so that when it's, uh, after, uh, going back to the community with these concerns and, uh, getting the, uh, input from the community and, um, support for adding or merging or even re- renaming it again. Can we do that? Would you, would board members, uh, support that suggestion, tabling this? Well, I'm going to ask the sponsor, I mean, yeah, the, uh, um, board member LaSaya Fraser.
I respectfully decline your offer. I think the time is now. If we don't act now, when? Our families, our children deserve to have this opportunity to be seen. And I decline.
Okay. Thank you. Board member Adam Stafford. You're on mute.
Okay, I had a chance to review the board policy. Um, and, and basically, it, it's, it says that the responsibility of the Board of Education is to select the names. But, you know, the board actually did not have any role in selecting these names. We were not included in the community groups that were put together. We weren't included in any of the, you know, as a board, we weren't brought along with any of the the surveys or just anything that was done to name this school. I think based off of that alone, we're vi- in violation of the policy. And I feel like we should, uh, allow members to rescind their vote. And then we can restart the process, um, but actually following said policy where the Board of Education has at least two to three members that are a part of the naming protocol. Um, because from what I'm understanding, n- none of us knew anything, or maybe one person knew what was happening until it was time to vote. And we were never kept abreast of what was, what was the progress of naming of the school. So I would just like to advocate that we allow members that would like to rescind their vote, allow them to rescind it, at which point then we would be able to re- restart this process of naming the school, but doing it in the way that actual, the actual policy mandates that we do it.
Board member Pamela Boozer Strutter. You're on mute.
I thank you because I recognize I have my two rounds, but I more of a process point that if we don't act today, uh, this building will progress. Uh, there's already, you know, orders need to be made on the names of the six middle schools. The, um, students are eagerly standing by for their opportunity to vote on the colors and the mascot. Um, time is of the essence and that is why this was added to a special meeting. Uh, tonight is the night to do this or we inter- or we create issues in the entire process of the six middle schools naming and getting, getting everything ready on time. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Vice Chair Williams.
I'm going to speak without turning on my, um, camera. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to remind board members, specifically board member Adam Stafford, that on Friday, September ninth, I sent out the Board Action Summary that in, that was, uh, included the Adelphi naming, um, of that school. Of that, there were seven hundred and fifty-six votes that were taken. Out of those seven hundred and fifty-six votes, forty-two percent of them chose the name Adelphi. There were, out of those, uh, people that were included in the vote, there were approximately three hundred of those votes came from, um, the Latino community or Spanish speaking community. And of that thirty, almost forty percent of those votes voted for the Adelphi. And also there were five meetings held and in that Board Action Summary, it included the information of the members and the process. Being that I am a, a board member who has a school that shares the population of one of the schools that are recipients of the P three school and needed to have a name, I was very involved and I believe, uh, the board member that I shared the process with was involved as well with the naming of the school. And I'm not sure, um, how much information was shared with other board members, but I believe that the information was shared in a regular, uh, notice from the CEO and her weekly, uh, reports that talks about the process of the naming of the school. So I just wanted to, to just inform you of the process and the information that was shared with the board members so that you were up to date um, and in the loop of the process. I think that, um, this, I agree with the board members who stated that, uh, this school hasn't been named yet because the school hasn't opened. What we are doing right now in a timely fashion is ensuring that we can get all the things, the signs, the letterhead and all of those things done. And so I agree that the time is now for us to make um, a motion and take action in selecting the correct name. And I think this is a very good um, option for, um, satisfying not only the, uh, the request of the members who participated in the meetings and shared their time, but also, I think it also supports the second, um, top vote getter for that group. So we're actually, um, supporting the number one and number two vote getters that were a part of this process. So, um, I will support the, the renaming of the school to be Sonia Sotomayor Middle School at Adelphi. Thank you.
This is, uh, board member Curtis Valentine. Can we call for the question?
Madam Chair, may I be recognized?
Madam Chair, you're muted.
This is John Tatum, the parliamentarian.
Madam Chair, you're on mute. Okay.
Mr. Tatum.
Thank you and good evening to everyone. Um, I wanted to have a concern about the motion to table. Uh, that is an improper motion and the preferred motion is postpone. And postpone gives you an opportunity to select a date and a time certain in the future. Uh, also, one of the point I would like to make is that, uh, you don't have to ask another person. You don't have to get another person's permission to make a motion. So if you, uh, understand those two comments, I appreciate that and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Tatum. Um, board member, um, uh, did Al Bauer get a chance to speak? Uh, Al, Sarona Ruiz, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And colleagues, I have to express the same sentiments as my colleagues who are also, um, agreeing with this necessary change and this name that I think, like board member William stated, really is all encompassing of those who were involved and those who submitted a survey. Um, as a product of Prince George's County, in my senior year, a Latino student, I would have loved the opportunity to have gone to a school called Sonia Sotomayor Middle School. As a student who one day aspires to go into law, that would have been even more amazing. To see that inspiration, to say that I went to Sonia Sotomayor Middle School, the first Hispanic justice on Supreme Court, the person I can look up to. That is an amazing thing, such an inspiration. And I would like the kids in Adelphi to be able to share that inspiration, to be able to aspire to be a social advocate, to see themselves being shatters of glass windows that they too can be the first of something if they put their mind in soon. That they could achieve what they want and that is what this Latin American hero does, which is why this name is so fitting for this community. I believe it is within the right of the Board of Education to go about and name the school. If it was, you know, the committee's responsibility to name the school themselves, it wouldn't require a Board of Education vote. I urge board members to agree with those who agree with this policy, with this motion and rename the school to, well, name the school Sonia Mar- Sot- Sonia Sotomayor Middle School at Adelphi. Thank you. And with that, Madam Chair, I call previous question.
We will vote. The vote is, uh, let me repeat the motion made by board member LaSaya Fraser to rename the, uh, um, Adelphi Middle School to Sonia Sotoma- Sotomayor um, Middle School at Adelphi. I'll take a roll call. Miss, um, Bart Burton, Burton, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Adam Stafford.
Yes.
Ms. Boozer Strutter.
Yes.
Mr. Sarona Ruiz.
Yes.
Dr. Harris.
Yes.
Mrs. LaSaya Fraser.
Yes.
Mrs. Mickens Murray.
Abstain.
Dr. Z Miller. Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. Valentine.
Hi.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Dr. Miller.
I'm, I'm going to explain my vote very carefully because we have been presented with the fact that there's a concern with us violating our policy, uh, in terms of how we could handle this. I also did make the, uh, well, I made the suggestion to table, but the, um, parliamentarian did come in and say we could have substituted, uh, tabling for postponement, which could, and with a date. And we could have postponed this until our September twenty-second meeting, which would give the Governance and, um, Policy and Governance Committee time to revisit that policy, uh, amend it and we could vote on it and then take this action on that date. So I'm going to abstain at this time on the air of caution. I agree with the renaming. I want that to be, uh, on record. I do agree with the renaming to, uh, Sonia Sotomayor, but I would like to have it done appropriately and within our policy and procedures. The motion carries, um, the motion carries ten ayes and two abstentions. The, uh, nine ayes, two abstentions and one, two, uh, one, one absence. Now we will move on to the next, uh, item on the agenda. Thank you, colleagues. Uh, the next discussion topic is the report by the Inspector General for Education. The same rules apply. The first speaker, five minutes, um, uh, we will go in rounds, um, yes, the first speaker, five minutes and then the second round, two minutes. So with that, um, again, the, uh, meeting was originally requested by board member Mickens Murray. So I will give her an opportunity to, uh, address or begin the discussion on this, uh, issue.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Madam Chair, I move to accept the August twenty-second, twenty twenty-two OIG report and recommendations.
Is there a second?
Second.
Who's second? I didn't see.
Board members around you.
Any discussion?
This is, uh, a board member Valentine.
Wait a minute, you're, um, Vice Chair Williams has her hand up for discussion. Vice Chair Williams.
I'm going to try it again and, and I'm not going to turn on my camera. Um, I would just like to, um, to make a, a, an amendment to the, uh, recommendation. Um, the recommendate, the recommendation, it, I would like to state that we should it, I would like to state that we should move the recommendations from the OIG to the Policy and Governance Committee for implementation. I would like to have the motion be, and and hopefully, Mr. Parliamentarian, I'm saying this correctly. I would like to substitute the motion placed on the floor to state that we accept the recommendations of the OIG report and move it to the Policy and Governance Committee for implementation through changes to the policy manual and procedures as stated in the report.
I have a question.
Yes, the chair recognizes Mickens Murray.
Okay, my motion was, I move to accept the August twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two OIG report and recommendations. So if, if you want to include uh the Policy and Governance Committee work in the recommendations, I can accept your um your addition amendment.
Does the person who second, uh, concur? Who's second?
Alvaro.
Oh, Alvaro. The, uh, the maker of the motion has accepted it. So, does this, uh, person who seconded Mr. Parliament, Mr. Tatum, do they have to also accept the amendment?
Uh, anyone, any could, anyone can second the motion, and it doesn't have to be the person who seconded the first time it came up.
So do I have a second to accept the amendment?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I just want to, a point of clarification. I was making a substitute motion to accept the recommendations and move them to the Policy and Governance Committee for implementation by revise, reviewing and revising um procedures, policies, and manuals to reflect the recommendations.
Is that what you accepted, Board Member Mickens Murray?
So I believe a substitute motion replaces the motion on the floor.
And I guess that's a question for the parliamentarian because it does not deal with uh accepting the OIG report.
Um, whatever motion is on the floor can be seconded by anyone, and it doesn't have to be the person who seconded the first time around. Now, as far as uh the dates are concerned, um, it's still valid because it's a substitute. In other words, some, one thing replacing another thing. And so, once it becomes a substitute, and every, and and you vote on that, the results of that vote will determine whether it will have the same status as it did before or whether it will have a new status approved by the board.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I don't believe that there was a second to the substitute motion.
Second.
Who's second? Oh, okay. To accept the substitute motion. So where do we go from here, Mr. Parliamentarian?
Now you have to vote.
On the second or the first?
You have to vote on the, you have to vote on the substitute. In other words, whatever you're substituting is now the main motion on the floor, and you would have to have another vote, which would mean that you would have to vote right now because it now becomes the main motion. It's not the first motion anymore. It's a new motion, basically, because it's come up to the floor before. And now they're asking for a few changes. And so now what you're voting on, what the board is voting on, is what's different about the substitute than the first motion? And from my point of view, the substitute uh has to take two votes. Vote on substituting. And once you have voted on substituting, now you have a main motion that has changed. So you have to uh allow everyone to agree with the change. I, I hope I'm making myself clear.
Mr. Tatum, is there any discussion on the substitute before the vote?
That is correct.
This is board member Valentine. I, I had a point of clarification or point of.
The chair recognizes uh Board Member Valentine.
Um, I did want to say, and this, you know, reading the OIG report, um, it was quite um enlightening, but also reflective. You know, I've, I've, as a board member, have tried to make the best decisions possible with the information I had. Um, and information in the report obviously called me to reflect on, you know, decisions I've made in the past um, and the impact it's had on my, on my colleagues. And so that, that being said, uh, I definitely wanted to publicly uh say to those board members who were impacted by decisions I might have made that um I come through with a public, you know, some was an apology, that, you know, I, I should have done more homework. Uh, I should have um come to meeting better prepared. Uh, I'm someone who's been on board nine years. I'm not pu, I'm not perfect. Uh, but as, in, in the spirit of collegiality and understanding my role, that this report does cause me to reflect on votes I've taken in the past and to prepare me to take better votes in the future. That being said, uh, I did want a motion to amend the report as well and to rescind the, the motion to remove. Um, I mean, it's, it's sort of in, in light of what I, in light of what I've seen and the votes I've taken in the past, uh, to me, I think it's only fair. And so I'm, I'm making that, that emotion, a substitute motion, uh, but that is a motion I'd like to make.
Madam Chair.
If I could respond to that.
Yes, Mr. Tatum.
There's a motion on the floor right now, and there can only be one motion on the floor at a time. The motion that's on the floor right now is to substitute another motion. So if you want to take this further, you can, you can substitute the substitute. But that would be the end of the line. That, you cannot go any further than that. So.
Well, thank you, sir. That, that would my, my motion, the substitute, the substitute. That's my motion.
Second.
Right.
So what is the substitute? Because all I have is apology.
No, no, okay, okay. My, my motion is to accept the uh OIG's report, but to amend it, to amend it to uh to remove the removal of, of office of, of board members.
Madam Chair, may I say something, please?
Oh, that, that's, uh, yes, Board Member Mickens Murray, the chair recognizes.
And, and maybe, and maybe this is something that, uh, Mr. Whitley can help us with. I was thinking that if we accepted the report, which exonerates the previous board members who were named in that ethics report and the recommendations of the OIG, I think we accomplished what Mr. uh Board Member Valentine was asking for, unless I'm totally mistaken.
May I be heard, Madam Chair?
Uh, Mr. Whitley, yes. The board recognizes legal counsel.
So to the extent I understand, uh, Board Member Mickens Murray's uh comment, I believe by accepting the uh Inspector General's report, that would negate the need to uh rescind previous votes. If that's, if that was your question, uh, Board Member Mickens Murray.
Yes, thank you. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair.
So you're saying, Mr. Whitley, negate, negate previous votes, previous votes to what?
Uh, Mr., Mr. Board, Board Member Valentine, I believe, said he wanted to uh rescind his vote dealing with, uh, I guess, requests for removal of previous board members, uh, board members.
But that was not in the, uh, that is not a part of the uh report. So now we're gonna go, if you, if you want to talk about uh what the report says, then I think that as you and your colleague indicated to us that you needed time to review what that report is saying and uh give us a clear, clear, some clear guidance where uh where, what, what, how that is to be interpreted, the intent of, the intent of that report. Because there, there, um, there has been um, uh, reports that all the board members have received, and um I received something from a legal, uh, well, I won't say legal, but a group that indicated that um the port, the, the um IG's report has, there's conflict with the, with, with uh information in the IG's report uh with that of the audit report that the state paid for. And the second thing is that um the uh we're, we're asking to accept a report that doesn't address the purpose that the report was, uh, the investigation was done. If you look at, uh, look at the uh statement made by the um Inspector General, if the purpose was to investigate the spending of the um of funds, expense, yeah, spending of funds by the EAP, like the Ethics Panel. So um I think there's a lot of um conflicting, could be considered conflicting information. And uh I'm just not clear on um Board Member saying, uh, uh, Board Member um Valentine's statement that the IG's report exonerates anybody. It was to report its investig-
Well, Dr. Dr. Miller, I'm, I'm being a part, I did not say that was, that was, that was Board Member Mickens Murray, uh, reiteration. I think.
Oh, I apologize. Whoever said it.
No, and so, a point of clarification is really quickly on my substitute motion. Um, if it, if it is, if it is the case, and again, um, I just want to be clear that it is one to accept the report. I think that's, I think that's pretty much clear across all of the votes. But the, but the, but the amendment to the vote would be to rescind the vote to remove, which was aside from the report, which is a previous vote that I took and others took. That's my point.
But that is not a part of. I will second Valentine's motion.
But that is not a part of this discussion. The discussion was the report of the Inspector General. It has nothing to do with any other reports. We did not say we were going to discuss it because that takes us into a discussion of other reports, and it's unfair to other board members to have to uh be forced to vote on uh this issue that involves other issues that are, were not on the table for discussion. Board Member, um, um, Mickens, I mean, not Mickens, but you weren't.
David Murray.
David Murray. You're next.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Um, thank you, um, colleagues Mickens Murray and LaSalle Frazier for, for helping to call this meeting. Um, thank you, Mr. Valentine, for your vote. I mean, your, your motion on this evening, this, this now, the, the motion that we need to, to vote on. Um, I think that this is a moment for the board to move forward, to heal, to put this behind us. Um, his motion does that by both accepting the OIG report and um rescinding the request to remove members, is that still up at the state? And so this vote can can put an end to that and really let this board enter a new chapter. Um, so with that, I'd like to, to call the question on Mr. Valentine's motion, which is um the last motion that was up and has been seconded like three times, and it seems like it has enough votes to pass, and so that will probably be the most sufficient way to proceed would, would be to vote on Mr. Valentine's motion, which the parliamentarian has stated uh would be the last substitute and is, is on the floor and been seconded.
Mr. um Tatum, uh, Mr. Valentine's vote calls for rescinding uh something that was not on the agenda to be discussed, and it is not a part of the report, and that's where I have a concern.
Okay, uh, where I have a concern is that this, the substitute, the first substitute is uh substituting from a previous motion that was made and voted on. And by the way, ladies and gentlemen, we're not, huh, we're not uh substituting votes. It's always the motion. And so if, if Mr. Valentine wants to make a, a mo, a motion to substitute, his substitute has to substitute something in the first substitutes motion. We're going backwards from here. So Mr. Valentine's vote has to be voted on. If that pay, passes a failure, then you go to the first substitute. And if that fails, you're back at the main motion again, and you're back where you started. So uh my suggestion here is that you, that the board members carefully understand what's being substituted. Starting at the beginning, the first substitute is to uh substitute was made by the chair. And so, and so now this next substitute has to substitute something in the first substitute. And I think you understand that part, but what you didn't understand at first was that the, the motion that was originally just uh thought of was to lay on the table. And you can't, you know, lay on the table is not the right motion. Obviously, somebody wants to postpone something for a later time. And that was the first idea. And then when uh I was telling the board that lay on the table is a motion that rubbish rules um doesn't uh allow only in fine circumstances. And you change to a postpone, which is fine. So now that, now that the idea of postponing um went, I think it was, it failed. The first substitute, it passed, I think, and then now we're on the second, the second substitute, Mr. Murray's substitute. So we gotta go backwards. At this point, we have to go backwards. And guess what? And somebody asked this earlier. It was uh Mr. Whitley. There can be discussions on all three. You can have discussion on Mr. Murray's motion, whether it goes up or down, and then you're back to the very first substitute. You can have discussion on it. And depending on whether it passes a failure, you can have more discussion on the first motion.
Madam Chair, may I be heard?
Yes, Mr. Whitley.
I believe we're currently at a position where uh, uh, there was a call to question on uh Board Member Valentine's uh substitute, substitute, the substitute motion. I believe that the first part of Mr. Valentine's uh motion is appropriate because the uh notice to the board did state that we were discussing the um Inspector General's report. I don't believe that there was any mention of rescinding previous votes, so that may have to be, I, I, I don't believe that that part of the um motion is appropriate at this time. If that's the will of the board, um, that can be addressed at the next meeting or a special meeting. Um, so uh it would be my recommendation that you vote on the first part of the motion, which is to accept the IG's report. And if the board wants to take further action, that would have to be done by subsequent motion at a subsequent hearing.
Point of clarification.
With proper notice.
For Vice Chair Williams?
Uh, there were people in queue to speak prior to the call for question. Um, and I guess it's a question for the parliamentarian. Will those people who were in the queue to speak prior to the call for question be allowed to speak?
Yes, they, yeah, yeah, they, they will be allowed to speak. The motion to call the question, um, I listened for it to be seconded, and it wasn't seconded. So that motion didn't really come to the table at all, the motion to call the question, because that only, I didn't hear a second, and, but the other thing, it carries a two-thirds vote. And that's the only one of the three that needs a, or four, actually, that needs a, a two-thirds vote. So that's why, in my perception, the uh call to question wasn't appropriate because it did not. Because it did not get a second.
Second, I'd like to second the motion to call the question.
Uh, I'm going to recognize the, I did not recognize, uh, I'm recognizing the people in the queue. At this time and Vice Chair Williams, I recognize, the chair recognizes you.
I just wanted to put on the record exactly the background that's given for the OIG report so that we're clear. On what the OIG report is doing. The OIG report is responding to complaints that allege the Prince George's County Board of Education Ethics Advisory Panel. Used taxpayer funds to conduct an improper investigation of several elected board members. Additionally, the OIGE received complaints concerning an unauthorized release. Of an unapproved E A P report to representatives of the Prince George's County community. The report contained alleg- alleged findings of the E A P against B O E members. But had not been presented to the board for approval. So the purpose of this report does not discuss the actions that precipitated. The E A P's investigation. This report is actually investigating the investigative actions. So we have to be clear when we use terms like exonerate or clear or, you know, uh. When we're looking at how those actions that required this investigation, that is not what this report reviewed. This report investigated the investigators and the actions of the investigation. It does not touch on the actions of the board members that precipitated the investigation. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Thank you. Uh, Board Member Mickens, um, Adam Stafford.
Okay, um, so I hope that all of my colleagues have a copy of the OIGE report. Um, because I think that it's really important that we are clear on what we're voting on right now. Um, like, you know. The OIGE is the independent inspector general. Uh, auditing agency and from the state of Maryland. And so they conducted this investigation. And their findings, I'm going to just be very clear about what their findings were. Um, the OIGE determined that the E A P investigation was at best incomplete. That there were major discrepancies in the ethics panel's investigation. There were many responses from board members such as myself and other board, other elected board members here. Uh, that would have exonerated, uh, many of us from these false allegations. However, the inspector general includes that the ethics panel didn't include any of that information in their report. They didn't include any of our information that we submitted and they also, uh. Created a recklessly created a false narrative of unethical conduct. Okay? Um, as you know, um, another, another thing that I want to, to note is that our board chair. Uh, one of the findings of the report was that our board chair. Um, assisted, uh, an, an organization and an individual with filing the complaints. That led to these false ethics reports. So, um, this is, and it also revealed. That the school system, uh, violated the PG CPS board policy. Um, which required permission, uh, to seek the outside counsel that wrote, uh, these reports. They did not identify conflict, um, in order to bring in this outside counsel. Um, and so our ethics panel did not provide a complete or a fact based report. And I'm reading this directly from the, uh, the, um, OIGE report. It's really important that we understand that information as some context. And so what we're seeing here is that board members are current have, there was a vote to remove board members. At the state level. And so we are saying that that vote is based on the ethics reports. This OIGE report is investigating the generation, the creation, and the dissemination of these. False reports. And so by us, um, essentially, um, agreeing with these reports. Were agreeing with the inspector general that these report, this ethics panel created reports that were inaccurate. And that board members should have an opportunity to rescind their votes that they made based on these inaccurate reports. And so my question to our attorneys is that if we vote to accept these findings of this report. Will you then write a letter to the state board stating that. We, that board members had the opportunity to rescind their votes. Based on these false reports that we have accepted as being false by the board. That's one question I have. Can you pause my time?
Your time is, uh, you have.
I still have a minute left.
I'm looking to see now. It's, you have a minute.
Any legal advice I give to the board would be done in executive session.
Okay, so I just want to, um, echo Curtis's motion, uh, my colleague's motion. I actually just wanted to call the question. Um, I feel that we're going around in circles and we should just go ahead and call the question, um, on the motion that's currently on the floor right now.
Second.
I'm moving.
A classification. We do have a point. Two hands in the queue before that motion came up and, um. This, uh, uh, for the record, and since this is a public meeting, uh, board member, uh, Adam Stafford. You have established that you are stating that the reports are false. The public has access to this information as well as the state board. And the state board did pay a private ent- uh, entity, uh, uh, premium. Um, accounting services. I, I think that's it. Anyway, they paid an outside, uh, vendor to do an audit. The audit that was, uh, presented to this board and to, uh, that the state accepted. Had the same or similar recommendations, uh, as the, uh, I, OIG. You're getting into, you have gotten into the weeds where you are making allegations of, uh, reports being false. I have documentation that I will be sharing, that I received, and I think all of the board members probably received it today too. From, uh, Mr., uh, the former chair of the E A P. Who refutes the allegations, uh, of some of the statements in this report. And I think it's important that before we start jumping the gun about something being false. That everyone takes advantage of due process, which you and the other four alleg- uh, allegations did not take advantage of. When the E A P called you in, you took your case to the case, uh, to the state. You did not take advantage of your due process. And so when you talk about false. Uh, you, I think you would need to justify and be careful with saying that because that could put us as a board in a litigious position.
Yes, and if I can respond, please, Dr. Miller, uh, I can respond. I still had, I still had a minute left.
I am, the chair recognizes Mr. Whitley, our legal counsel.
Madam Chair, members of the board, um, i- i- if I could advise, um, there's a lot of, um. Opinions being stated with reference to the documents. The documents speak for themselves. Um, we make them available to the public, to the extent we put them on board docs. So the public can read them, read the documents for themselves, that they speak for themselves, um, you know, uh. So we don't have to give, necessarily give opinions as to what the documents say. Um, and hopefully that will streamline the, the, uh, the, the expected vote. And we can get to the purpose of the reason that the, uh, special meeting was called.
Point of information, the documents are not on board docs.
Not, I recommended that we put them on board docs.
I believe I still had time left on my, my first round.
One minute.
Okay, uh, Dr. Miller, um, unfortunately, some of the things that you're saying, you. I'm, I'm unsure where you're getting your information from. I believe that it's important for you to explain to the public why you worked with the organization and an individual. To develop the genesis of this, which were the hotline complaints. I think it's also important to not conflate the M S D E audit by an accounting firm. That did not cover the same topics of the investigation of the OIGE. So you're conflating two things that did not overlap, uh, in, in the way that you're describing. So please be, you know, forthcoming with the public. Um, so these, these allegations have been disproven. And by saying that we did not take advantage of our due process, you're omitting the fact that the ethics panel omitted. All of the written testimony that we turned in as part of our due process. That was purposefully left out of the final reports. So I believe that it's important for you to be truthful with the public about these reports. And to, um, allow us to call, we've called the question, it's been seconded, so please allow us to take the vote at this time.
We have people in queue to speak.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair, may I speak, please? I can't hear you. You're muted.
I'm waiting for the parliamentarian to be let in. He was disconnected.
Oh, okay.
And, uh, for the sake of the audience, um, the public, uh, board member Adam Stafford, you have gone beyond the point of, um. Of, uh, responsible commentary. Uh, you have made, you have stated allegations that have not been proven, uh, in, in reference to the chair. And you have not stated, um, the, uh, you, you have not stated that these allegations were made by public. Not the chair. The chair, the process is complaints came in from the public. On these board members. The, uh.
Madam Chair.
May I finish? I will finish. I have the floor. The complaints go to the, um. Uh, we're, we're forwarded to the, uh, internal auditor. The process is that the internal auditor investigates to determine the validity of the complaints. And by getting affidavits from the person's filing complaints. Once those affidavits are submitted, they are, then the, uh, complaints are turned, depending on the complaints. They are turned over to the ethics panel. And that is how, that is the process. So what you have just stated is your opinion again. And as Mr. Our, our parliamentarian has stated. Uh, we're getting into opinions and not fact. And so with that, um, there were, uh. Two other hands in the queue. Uh, Dickens Murray was next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I want to be clear why I wanted this meeting called. The OIG is an independent entity within the government of the state of Maryland. Responsible for examining and investigating the management and affairs of county education, local school systems, et cetera. The OIG provided facts, the ethics advisory panels July twenty third, twenty twenty two report. Failed to include relevant publicly available information. Which in the report, it says, exonerates board members named in the E A P report. The report also validates there was no criminal act discovered. Therefore, I encourage my colleagues to accept the OIG report and the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Board member, uh, uh, Vice Chair Williams.
Thank you very much. I wa- I was in the queue prior. The, the vice chair hasn't taken her hand down the entire evening.
No, I did take my hand down and I put it back up. Thank you very much. I did do that. I put it down and I put it back up.
Well, you're on round six and some people haven't even spoken.
Miss Dickens Murray, would you put your hand down, please, so that I won't, uh. Uh, board, uh, the chair recognizes Vice Chair Williams.
Thank you. I have to remind people that this investigation was not about the actions. That board members took. This was about the process. There was an audit firm that responded to the request. Of the board chair to the county council that looked at those actions. And those actions were the, the results of those actions, the result of that investigation. Did, uh. Was in alignment with the, uh, ethics report, but that is not a part of the discussion today. So if we want to talk about the actions, I think that we need to put that on the agenda. And I'm requesting the chair put it on the agenda. The audit report that was done by the Board of Education. That looked at the actions that these board members took. So there is a difference. So. That is all, Madam Chair.
Is there a sec, is that a motion or are you just making a, a recommendation?
We will, we will discuss that in the agenda setting meeting.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Board Member, um, David Murray.
Thank you. Just, just wanted to reiterate, yes, that the question's been called, seconded, everyone in, in the queue has spoken. Um, if Mr. Valentine could just read back his motion and proceed into a vote, um, that will be, um, the, the appropriate move. Thank you.
Well, my, my motion was to accept the report of the OIG, um, and just for, for a clarification. Um, the vote that I am asking to rescind is a vote that I took based on information. That the OIG report puts into question. So I can't make any determination about why other people may voted for that, that particular vote to remove. But I, Curtis Valentine, took my vote based on the, oh, based on the information that this report refutes. And so that's why I'm making this motion, is a motion to accept the OIG report and to rescind a vote that I took. Based on the information, which is to remove, uh, members from the board.
Madam Chair, may I speak?
Yes, Mr. Whitley.
A- again, I missed about, uh, as a board member Valentine, I just want to reiterate that I believe the first part of your motion is appropriate. Because that was listed and given to the, to the general public that we were going to be discussing the OIG's report. I don't believe that the second part of your motion, uh, is properly for the board because there was no notice given to the public. That would, we would be taking a second vote or rescinding a previous vote. Um, board can, board can do what it wants to do, but I just wanted to put on the record that I don't believe that the second part of the motion. Um, is properly before the board. And I also stated previously that I believe by voting to rescind the OIG's report. It's implicit that you are, um, that the, um, vote to remove these board members, that there was an issue with it.
Well, well, let me, let me say this. And, and so I made the motion, colleague David Murray, um, seconded, you know. As always, I am, I am mindful of votes that are taken that could potentially be pushed back on. Um, and so I guess, um. My, my question, again, to, to my, to my seconder, Mr. Murray, what is your, um, uh. What is your, uh, privilege that relates to us taking this motion up at a subsequent board meeting that I would, that I would obviously, uh, initiate. Um, based on information that I proposed tonight. Now, if, if he refuses to, to, to remove, remove his second, then we have to move forward no matter what I say.
And Mr. Mr. Murray, again, we're not, we're going to vote to accept the, uh, Inspector General's report. There would just need to be a second motion to, if, if it's the will of the board to rescind the motion to remove the board members. It's not that, that won't come up. It's just that this is not the appropriate time for that to come up.
So I appreciate that opinion. I think there, there's a motion that's, that's properly, properly moved and seconded. The, the two things are intertwined and would like to proceed towards it.
Mr. Parliamentarian, Mr. Whitley has spoken. And, uh, it appears that board members are insistent on, uh, taking this Mr. Valentine's motion. With, uh, which includes, uh, a motion that, of something that was not on this agenda. So how do we proceed? Mr. Tatum.
Yeah, I'm here. Um, I'm in agreement with Mr. Whitley. Uh, and the way to get around that is that, uh, Robert's rules has a, a motion which is called divide the question. And you have to vote on dividing the question as well, but that only takes a majority vote. And when you, uh, if that motion to divide the question is approved. Then you would have to vote on each part of that motion separately.
But Madam Chair, there's currently no motion on the bo- on the floor to divide the question. So.
Point of information.
The board has gotten advice from legal counsel, the board's gotten advice from the parliamentarian. I think we're at a point now where it's, uh, time to vote.
Um, I just have a point of.
I recognize. Boozer Struther. The chair recognizes Boozer Struther.
Parliamentarian, can I be acknowledged if I have a point of clarification?
That's a request for, for information.
A request for information?
Yeah, we could, that's the proper name for that, request for information.
Okay, just, let's just go ahead and, well.
You've been acknowledged, uh, the board acknowledged you.
Okay, I just wanted to ask, you know, the, the first, um, agenda item that we had this evening was about. Ni- the naming of the Adelphi School, but it wasn't necessarily about the rescinding of that vote. Isn't that correct? So why would this?
That was not explicit. And again, during that vote, the board overruled, uh, advice from counsel and advice from the parliamentarian. I said that you're free to do that as well.
So colleagues, thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Whitley. So colleagues, this has happened this evening. Uh, and so I just wanted to put that out there for us to remember. Thank you.
Uh, Board Member Boozer Struther, and then we will call for the vote.
Yeah, thank you so much. I mean, I, I guess I just wanted to say I thought it was good progress that we're receiving this document. Since it was addressed to the public, it wasn't addressed to the Board of Education and giving ourselves time to consider it. So, um, I think, uh, having these two separate topics, uh. You know, can confuse the public on where one board member stands. So, um, I just wanted to, to point out that before we take our vote.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. We will be voting on the motion made by Board Member Valentine to, um, accept the, um. OIG's report with him rescinding his vote of a previous vote, uh, for.
Madam Chair.
Yes, uh, Vice Chair.
A point of clarification, I believe we're voting on accepting his substitute motion.
Okay.
That's what I believe we're voting on. Is that correct, Mr. Parliamentarian?
It is.
Yeah, so if, if it's accepted, then, and then it goes back to the full, so if I do vote on it twice, correct?
Yeah, first we vote on accepting it as a substitute motion, and then we vote on the content of that motion.
That's correct. And that's where divided question comes in. But let's go with the voting. I agree with everybody. Let's go with the voting.
Roll call, all in favor of accepting the substitute motion of, of Board Member Valentine. A roll call, Miss, uh, oh, is there, is staff in there?
Yes, I'm here, I'm here.
Oh, okay, Mario.
Mrs. Adam Stafford.
Yes.
This Boozer Struther.
No.
Mr. Simone Ruiz.
Yes.
Dr. Harris.
Yes.
Mrs. LaSalleier Frazier.
Yes.
Mrs. Nickens Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. Valentine.
Aye.
Mrs. Williams.
No.
Dr. Miller.
Epstein. Now we will move to the, um. The second part of this motion.
Which is the content of the motion, yes.
Yes, the content. And the content is, please explain for the record.
Mr. Valentine.
Oh, I mean, my, so, I mean, I, can you all hear me? So, I mean, my, my motion is, is the, um. Is, is the main motion, which is to accept the OIG's report, um, and to rescind a previous, uh, vote. To, uh, have board members removed based on that information.
Is there a second?
A second.
It has been moved in second to accept the AG, uh, um, Inspector General's report. And to rescind a previous vote. To remove board members, four board members, is that correct?
Yes, for me.
Madam Chair, before we take this vote, I have a point, another point of clarification before we take this vote.
Yes.
Um, can, can we have staff read the vote count? For the previous motion that, to, to accept the substitution?
Well, I, I have a clarif- question because if we accepted the substitution, I thought the substitution was the, um. That, uh, we accept the report with.
No, no, we accepted it as a substitution. And so I just want to, I would just like to have the count for accepting. Of the substitution. I did not hear that read out.
Oh, the number, there, uh. There was, um, one, um, one abstention, one absenteeism. And that was Dr. Sabora Miller, um. Two no's and. Eight yes.
Thank you very much.
My motion has been moved in second. Who, who seconded my motion?
Mr. Murray.
I thought, I thought it was Ms. Mickens.
It was Ms. Nickens Murray.
Nickens Murray.
Uh, if there's no discussion, I can call for the question.
Yes.
Second.
Second. It's been moved in second to, now, what is this we're voting on now?
We're voting on my motion to, to move forward and to, uh, you know, complete this meeting.
Accept the OIG report. And rescind the votes from the previous moving people off the board.
And then we've called for the question, so I think it's time for the vote.
Yes.
All in favor of. Call a roll, roll call.
Mrs. Adam Stafford.
Aye.
This Boozer Struther.
I'm saying.
Mr. Simone Ruiz.
Aye.
Dr. Harris.
Yes.
Mrs. LaSalleier Frazier.
Yes.
Mrs. Nickens Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Thomas.
Yes.
Mr. Valentine.
Aye.
Mrs. Williams.
No.
Dr. Miller.
No.
We have one absent, one exten- abstention, two no's and. Eight, yes.
The motion carries. Motion carries to accept the I, OIG's report. And to, uh, rescind the votes, previous votes of board members. To, uh, remove, uh, for removal of board members. Well, that concludes this here, I mean, this meeting. And, um, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Second.
It's been moved in second to adjourn, uh, this meeting, this special meeting of the Board of Education on September twentieth, uh, September.
I think.
Fifteenth. Um, this special meeting, good night.
Good night.
Bye.
Madam Chair.